Entertain and adoption of the agenda. Proper move by Ms. Coats, second by Ms. Green. Are there any questions?
I'd like to move that we move a consent agenda item from, I'm sorry. I don't have the words right in front of me. The consent agenda item 12A to the Strategic Education Committee section of the meeting, so that it will be 9C.
I'm sorry, your microphone just came on. Wait, I'm trying to go again.
All right, I move to move to remove the item 12A from consent agenda and place it on the end of the Strategic Education Committee Agenda Section. And I believe that we have the required three board member support for that.
Okay, just hold one second. Everybody want to hold one second. So there have been a motion and by Ms. Coats and second by Ms. Green. Ms. Coats, you have a question since you made the motion?
So I'm wondering if she's, are you asking me to amend my motion? Or are we going to do the two motions for parliamentarians proceeding?
Well, since this changing something from the consent agenda only requires three votes, I thought that we might need to do it separately, but I'm not. I'm trying to make sure we do it right with Mr. Mezak.
All right, let's do two things here. First of all, we have a motion on the floor and has been seconded and we're in the question phase of that motion. Ms. Coats, do you accept a friendly amendment to your motion that you made?
No, and I'm looking at the policy right now because I thought it required a super majority to pull something off.
Okay, policy requires three board members to consent to.
I would prefer that to be a standalone vote.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we will, so you want to make a motion?
So, okay, yes, so I move to take item 12A from the consent agenda and place it on section Strategic Education Committee, the item 9C.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Dr. Frazier, second at motion. So we will entertain this second motion. And then we will come back to the other motion that's already placed on the floor for the approval of the agenda. Motion made by Ms. Dr. French, second by Dr. Frazier, and removing item 12A from consent and placing under the consent, I'm sorry, under Special Strategic Education.
Point of affirmation?
Yes. So that which will be 9C.
I wrote it.
One person or time, Ms. Darby?
So it looks like policy says that the chairman tries to beginning of it, meaning if any board member wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, a total of three members must agree to remove the item. So really, we don't need to vote on it because if they're, if three members agree, then it can get moved from consent to the.
Okay, which policy, which policy number is that? BE, okay, all right.
If you have a question.
All right, just one second. Ms. Ms. Coats?
It should be on the record as to the three you need to be.
We're going to get to that in a second. Yeah, all right. So Dr. French, you asked for item 12A to be removed to replace the Strategic Education Committee. According to policy, BE requires three board members. And who are the three board members? The two of us, besides yourself.
Um, Dr. Frazier and Ms. Coakley indicated support. I believe Ms. Darby was also in support.
Okay, Ms. Coakley is not present.
I'll be at the other person.
All right, okay, all right.
If anybody is, I mean, people seem amused. I'm happy to just give a brief explanation.
Well, you can, if you're going to discuss it now, then then we will move it to.
I don't want to discuss it right now. I just wanted to say it's to separate.
Well, we're not going to talk about it twice. We'll talk about it when we get to 9C.
All right.
Since policy have allowed you to move it and you have three supporting individuals to move it to 9C. So item 12A is now moved to 9C according to policy BE. So then there is a motion on the floor by Ms. Coats and second by Ms. Green for the adoption of the agenda as outlined with the noted correction. Are there any questions? Hearing none, then we ask that you please cast your vote.
She needs to support even more than I am.
I'm sorry. So I noticed what the motion actually says and just for clarity. It does not say what we're moving from consent to SEC. So we just went through all of that. We just need to make make clean that up. Is it going to repopulate you? It just says motion to adopt agenda and approve the consent agenda items but moving from consent to SEC. Yes, yes, please. All right, we're good to go then. Thank you, June. Okay, that motion passes. Senator, motion for item 1C approval of a minute of minutes.
Move for approval.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by.
Sure, I'll second.
Ms. Coats, are there any questions?
I'd like to request an amendment to the minutes for the special board meeting on April 28th. I'd like to ask that it be included that during executive session, we discuss board member meeting attendance.
I'm sorry.
Say that again, you want to include Hank?
I asked.
One driver of this meeting. Let me just do some housekeeping right now. There's only one person chairing this meeting. So if there's questions, I ask that you be recognized so that we can have an orderly. That's all. Okay, so everyone get their fair shot. So if you want to clarify, please, what you're asking for the minutes of the minutes.
I'm requesting the minutes for the April 28th special call meeting, the amended to include that during executive session, board member meeting attendance was discussed.
Any questions from anyone in reference to that?
Um, I guess we need a parliamentary explanation. Does that require a second? Is that a motion that requires a second? We possibly get the mics turned up just a little bit. It's hard for us down here to hear Dr. French and Dr. Frazier. Thank you.
All right, any questions?
So I do have one question. It's a clerical question. And while I don't dispute the discussion, we don't have discussion of any topics on our items in our agendas ever. So I don't know the necessity of putting that one on this one. And I would just like to see why is this one. Why should this one be such an outlier to the fact that our agendas are action, decision, and that the video and everything else, which of course is not executive session captures the meeting. So why justify this one above the other 19 meetings? That this discussion should be added?
I don't know that, I don't know 19 meetings where we discussed something that wasn't actually stated that we would discuss in executive session. Maybe you have better notes than I do. I felt like this was way outside of what we publicly noticed would be discussed in executive session, and that's why I want to include it for the record.
So if I may recall clearly and go back and look at this video, it has been captured or a statement was made by the chair at the end of the board meeting indicating about board members attendance there. So that that was captured or that was commented then at that particular time. So I don't see the need of including what was discussed in executive session in the open minutes.
Well, I I guess we just disagree. I think that we're supposed to.
Yeah. Right. So so if if any correction to the minutes would be my statement as that I made at the last board meeting near the end that captured that talked about board members attending in-person meetings and not by zone.
Why do you object to allowing the public to know that we discussed it during executive session?
Well, that was not, that was not a discussion in executive session.
You're saying that it did not happen?
Dr. French, I made a comment in open session that talked about board members attendance and is noted and is going to be corrected. And it will reflect in the minutes of that being what was said according to the video is what I'm saying. I am not going to discuss an open session about anything that occurred in executive session. Are there any further questions?
Given that this is an allowable action, can we go backwards and retro if we so see fit? I mean, I wonder if we're opening Pandora's box. I mean, I don't have the intention of that, but I'm wondering if we're opening Pandora's box. That past agendas are now in play.
I'm I'm not questioning any of our past board minutes that has been approved by the board and have been discussed and outlined. Every board member have the opportunity to read the minutes and to verify that the minutes are correct. And our votes that we cast at each board meeting reflects whether or not board members agree or disagree with the minutes that have been published. So I entertain a motion that we go to item 1D. Did we already cast the vote? All right, let's start.
Yeah, we need to make sure that the second is accurate.
June, are we good with the motion? Thank you. Okay, that motion passes. Very good time for a moment of silence. As such, you please stand for pleasure of leisure. Ms. Coats, we'll lead us. Okay, at this time now, we will go into our special recognition. Dr. Dill, I'm sorry. She's up there.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairman Mack, Vice Chair Waters, Board of Trustees, Dr. Taylor. This evening for special recognition, we are very excited to honor several outstanding educators and students. First up, we would like to start by recognizing Wando High School senior Millie Rice, the co-editor in chief of Legend, which is the school's award-winning yearbook, who was recently named the 2022 South Carolina Scholastic Journalist of the Year by the South Carolina Scholastic Press Association. Rice is the seventh student from Wando to earn this honor. She's also the fifth warrior to receive this award in the past six years and the fourth yearbook student to earn this recognition during that span. It is the highest honor a student can earn, I should say, a school journalist can earn. Millie is here tonight with her family, along with Wando English teacher and yearbook advisor Philip Caston and Wando principal Dr. Sherry Appleshimer. Don't see them though. But one more note, to earn this award, Millie completed an online portfolio of work ranging from writing, photography, design, editing, and entrepreneurship, as well as several letters of recommendation and a personal essay. She was honored by the South Carolina Scholastic Press Association at their annual annual conference earlier this spring. Please join us in congratulating Millie Rice. All right. Now, tonight, we also have several of our student athletes and coaches who won state championships in their respective sports during the spring season. Because spring athletic championships and other sports are still in progress or just finished up, we will bring back and honor those athletic champions in June during special recognition once all the spring sports have concluded. But now it's time to honor some of our South Carolina High School League state champions from the spring season. Tonight, you'll notice that our student athletes present will be wearing special board of trustees state championship medals given to them tonight on behalf of CCSD to recognize their outstanding athletic accomplishments this year. First up, we have Wando High School's Tucker Simon. Tucker won the South Carolina High School League 5A individual state title in boys golf last week. He shot two under par in the two-day tournament at the city of Charleston Municipal Course. He is the first warrior in 20 years to win the individual state championship in boys golf. And joining Tucker is his coach at Wando, Jerry Lloyd. Thank you and congratulations. Next up, we have the Wando Boys Lacrosse Team. They'll start trickling in here. They dominated Nation Ford in the South Carolina High School League 5A State Finals 21 to 9 at the end of last month in Irma. The Warriors scored eight unanswered goals in the second half to pull away and win their first state championship in 2018. It is their seventh state title in program history. Sam Goss led the way with six goals for Wando and Bryce Charling added four goals. The varsity roster includes, so hang on here, Connor Neal, Ian Peck, Bronson Fabrizio, Nico Bocabella, Luke Moore, Luke Tilden, Chris McTavish, Nicholas Kletakis, Max Truman, Caleb Spanos, Nathan Cooper, Garrett Mayer, Kieran Mauer, Dylan Boyce, John Buckman, Parker Klein, Caden Shear, Jamison Lowe, Sam Goss, Stephen Coker, Sean Carroll, Jack Parkin, Connor Coretta, Rashawn Joseph, Lucas Green, Bryce Charling, Connor Mauer, Hudson McConnell, Sheridan Bittenger, Kai Correa, Rhett Hartnett, Peter Folt, Carson Mallon, Connor Kramer, Roy Knight, and Dominic Posowski. Their head coach is Lance Renus. Congratulations. Next up, we have the Wando Girls Soccer Team. Come on down. The Warriors won the 5A State Championship for the second year in a row with an overtime victory in the state finals. The Warriors, who ended the season with a 19-1 record, captured this year's crown with a 2-1 victory over TL Hannah in Irma. Kylie Sino found the back of the net in the second overtime period to give Wando the victory. Sino actually had the assist in the game-winning goal in OT for the Warriors the previous year in the state finals. Ansley Doughty scored the other goal for Wando, which has now won 12 state championships in girls soccer overall. So let's list their roster. We have in the senior category Kylie Bosick, Carolyn Brinson, Macy Brooks, Morgan DeBarros, Alyssa Graham, Tatum Maxwell, Isabella Pounas, Caroline Richvolsky, Anna Shepherd, Hope Slimmer, Grace Wade, and Kennedy Walker. The juniors are Tori Cole, Lennon Lighthouser, and Kendall Smith. The sophomores are Kylie Sino, EG Dillard, Ansley Doughty, Ashton Doughty, Finley Dyback, Caroline Graham, and Joyce Slimmer. They also have a freshman, Sarah Domenico. Their head coach is Shannon Champ, Shannon Champ. She's now won eight state titles at Wando. Their assistant coaches are Alex Dunagan and Alexa Alchalsky. Congratulations, ladies. One more state champion in athletics. Unfortunately, they weren't here tonight, but on the on the docket, we have them. We want to recognize the Lucy Beckham High School Boys Lacrosse Team. They captured the High School League title at the 4A level with a 10-8 victory over Christchurch in the finals at Irma at the end of last month. In just their second year of existence, the Bengals now have a state championship. Ryan McCarthy led the way for the Bengals with three goals, and this is the first boys team title in any sport in school history. So congratulations to the Lucy Beckham Bengals Boys Lacrosse. All right, moving on, we would like to honor and recognize this year's district teacher of the year, Natalie Bennett. Now she get, now we get to talk about you while everybody looks at you. On Friday, May 13th, CCSD officials traveled to Northwoods to surprise Natalie with this honor. She is a sixth grade math teacher and has been an educator for 13 years, holding various positions in North and South Carolina. In the release that we put out, what sets Natalie apart, Natalie apart from her colleagues is her commitment to creating and a welcoming environment where students feel safe to learn and grow. Accomplishing this means participating in activities and organizations inside and outside the classroom. Natalie will help lead the CCSD Teacher of the Year Roundtable during the 2022-2023 school year and hopes to use this platform to emphasize the importance of teacher retention, especially in Title I schools. Please join us congratulating her again, Natalie Bennett, our 2022 CCSD Teacher of the Year. All right, next up, we'd like to honor the district's 2022 Rookie Teachers of the Year. We'll call them out one at a time. At the end of last week and the week before, district staff members surprised them by announcing that they are the Rookie Teachers of the Year. So let's meet them. Anna Barant from Laurel Hill Primary School. She is the early elementary Rookie Teacher of the Year. Next up, we have Christopher Green from Mamie P. Whiteside's Elementary School. He is the elementary Rookie Teacher of the Year. Then we have Caitlin Kits, who cannot be here with us this evening. She's from Camp Road Middle School, and she is the 2022 Middle School Rookie Teacher of the Year. And finally, we have Lida Rosendary from North Charleston High School. She is the 2022 High School Rookie Teacher of the Year. Principal Darby's still trying to figure out his camera. There you go. And let's give him one more round of applause. All right, next up, we have Academic Magnet High School, who continues to steer the day near the top of the rankings in the U.S. News and World Report National Rankings for best high schools in the country. The national publication named Academic Magnet the second-best high school in the country for the third year in a row. This is the fourth consecutive year the Raptors made it top two on this list. Academic Magnet was also number one in the country back in 2019. Tonight, we have with us the Academic Magnet High School Associate Principals Lucy Pinkney and Kimberly Zerps. They are also accompanied by the vice president of the school's Pi Foundation, so glad to have her here as well. CCSD also has three of the top five schools in the state according to this publication. Academic Magnet at number one, Charleston County School of the Arts at number two, and Wando High School at number five. But let's join Academic Magnet again, congratulate them on this amazing accomplishment. Congratulations. And finally, for our last recognition of the evening, but not our least, we'd like to welcome Ms. Anell Green, a math teacher at Charleston Development Academy. Career educator who's retiring on June 3rd after nearly 60 years of service. Multiple local media outlets have recently featured Ms. Green and shared her story as an educator over the last six decades. Ms. Green hails from Charleston, and she is a graduate of Burke High School. That was back in 1963. She attended Benedict College in Columbia and took her first job as a math teacher at AB Rhett Elementary shortly after graduating. She remained at AB Rhett for many years before teaching at Rivers Middle School in Charleston before she retired for the first time in 2013. Soon after retiring, she was called back to the profession, returned to the classroom at Brentwood Middle School in CCSD, and then Charleston Progressive Academy, and finally Charleston Development Academy, where she's been for the last 10-plus years. Let's thank Ms. Green one more time for her nearly 60 years of service.
On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we truly thank you for your 59 years of service, 60 years.
Got a roundup. And that is a great way to conclude our special recognitions for this evening. Dr. Taylor, Board of Trustees, back to you.
Okay, at this time, an intended motion to go into executive session. Properly move, we're now going to executive session. All right, so you can remain in this, where you're seated, we're going to excuse ourselves and go upstairs, we'll never see where.
...
Okay, we're gonna reconvene back into open session. Item five A was already conducted at the beginning of the meeting. We'll now go into item six A, student transfer due.
I've got a motion.
Okay.
I move that we reverse the constituent board decisions for the following students. Number one, number two, number five, number seven, number twelve, number thirteen, number fourteen, number fifteen, number sixteen, number nineteen. number fifteen, number sixteen, number nineteen, number twenty, and number twenty-four. And that we reverse and place number three, number four, number eight, number ten, number seventeen, number twenty-five, number twenty-six, and number twenty-seven. And that we uphold the constituent board's decision on number six, number nine, number eleven, number eighteen, number twenty-one, number twenty-two, number twenty-three, and number twenty-eight. Second.
That is been moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters. Julie, do you have that? You captured all of that? All right. Okay. All right, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Okay, Julie, Ms. Coakley and Dr. Frazier left the meeting, so. So that motion will pass six unanimously. Dr. Frazier's not here, so.
Can we identify the source of the feedback?
Yeah, they're working on it. Yep. All right, item six B.
Move for approval.
I would like to second, but I'd also like to make a friendly amendment, if I may. Ms. Darby, would you be amenable to moving to approve with a minimum bid at appraisal?
Yeah, that's fine.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Coates, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, so you just at the market value, not at a dollar amount?
That's right, yeah, yeah.
At the praise value. Okay, all right. Are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes, however. Julie, can you correct? Okay. All right. Thank you. So that actually will pass six unanimously. Item sixty.
I move to approve the candidate number one to fill the vacant seat on the D three constituent board.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Okay, that passes. Julie, if you can correct that. Okay, all right. All right, just as long as the record reflects, six yes. All right, item six D.
I move to deny the request.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Coates.
Are we denying them to continue the rest of this year next week?
No, I just for next year. No, I would assume they were staying through the end of this year.
Can we make the motion reflect that and move to?
Okay, so I, can I recall my motion, Julie? So I move to approve the students staying through the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and deny the request to stay enrolled for the next two years.
Is there a second to that? Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green and Ms. Waters, are there any questions? On the narrative, we're getting all the sound like. I know, I just. Hearing no questions, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Yeah, right, yeah. That motion passes, let the record reflect, six, zero. There's six of them. Seven, okay, all right, yeah, seven of them. Oh, we got it correct now, got it, all right. All right, item sixty.
I missed the first.
Moved by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Heder. Are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out motion passes, item six F.
Move for approval.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Heder, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Motion passes, item six G.
I move, great. I move that we accept the foreign exchange students and offer them positions at other high schools in the district.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Waters, second by Ms. Coates, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out item passes, item six H.
I'd like to move that we accept the foreign exchange students and offer them positions at other high schools. Offer this student a position at another high school in the district.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Waters, second by Ms. Darby, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out item passes, items six I.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out item passes, item six J.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out item passes, item six K.
Move for approval.
There's no second. Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green, are there any questions?
Do we want the relevant employee policy as part of the motion, so it's in the record?
In the application, I don't know.
The record is what the community.
Okay, does either party accept the friendly amendment of that request?
Um, hold on.
The policy would be J, F, A, B.
Right, but we didn't say that in any other motion.
That's because the other ones were not.
Right, so J F A B is the exchange policy, the other policy would be C, A. Okay, so. Which one was on here?
Okay.
So move to approve following policy J F A B C A. J F A B C A.
Can I say a second to that? Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out motion passes, item six L.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so same motion then as, okay, move to approve pursuant to policy J F A B C A.
Can I say a second? Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Heder, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out motion passes, item six M.
Move for approval.
Same policy.
Pursuant to policy J F A B C A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates, are there any questions? Hearing none, rest of the floor, please, cast your vote. Cut out motion passes, item seven A is public comments, Ms. Waters.
Thank you, Reverend Mac. We do have one in-person public comment, Jean Howard. Hello.
I have the results from the third grade South Carolina Ready Language Arts scores. From two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one, one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one African-American students were reading on grade level. In contrast, in two thousand and seventeen, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine white students were reading on grade level. Let me repeat that. Two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one African-American students were reading on grade level. But in two thousand and seventeen, only one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine white students were reading on grade level. These statistics show there's more than one or two years of learning loss for African-American students. So how did this happen? Over the past five years, principals and district staff have met every seven to ten days to review their schools. I think we would all have to agree, South Carolina Ready Scores have unveiled this type of review has not resulted in positive academics for black students. We've heard about ESSR initiatives and plans, but what about accountability as to the progress of these plans? This coming school year, the evaluation of ESSR school plans are going to be added to the above-mentioned reviews. This board needs to request that the principals and district supply more frequent data, more transparency to the public regarding these reviews, especially of ESSR school plans. Please don't be satisfied with the same method that has failed thousands of students over the past five years. There needs to be frequent measurable accountability for ESSR school plans. Thank you.
Thank you. We did receive one written comment in the same lane as the comments that you just heard. Reverend Mac, that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. At this time now, item eight A is superintendent's report, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Reverend Mac. The following items will be addressed this evening during the superintendent's report. They are the COVID update, which would be delivered by Mr. Jeff Arori, as well as the district highlights, which will be presented by Mr. Andy Crewell.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So the COVID slide for this board meeting is up on the, up on the board right now. You can see we've got a slight uptick in both student and staff cases, but nothing significant. Everything is going well in our schools. There are no other changes to report. We did quarantine one classroom over the last two weeks, and they are actually back in school, back in school today. And there's no indication of a significant problem at that school, so everything's on track. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Good to talk to the board as well about what's been happening around the district for the past few weeks and months. As you see on the board there, the first thing we want to mention is that Thomas C. Carrio Middle School recently earned a King-size Hershey Heartwarming Young Hero Grant. Students use the funds to support their peers at Morningside Middle School during a week of state testing. They decorated posters and signs and put together test survival kits, complete with letters of encouragement, pencils. They decorated posters and signs and put together test survival kits, complete with letters of encouragement, pencils, erasers, sharpeners, candies, and more. Carrio teachers even wrote letters of encouragement to their colleagues as well, and they traveled to Morningside to hand out the kits and post the signs, as you can imagine, they were very well received. James Island Charter High School took down Eastside five nil, they say nil across the pond, right, Mr. Brode in soccer, on Friday, May thirteenth, in Ermo to claim their second straight South Carolina High School League four A state title. In girls soccer, Alexis Spivey and Caleb McBrery both added a pair of goals for James Island. They finished the season with a twenty-one and two record. Thanks to Water Mission, students at Sanders Clyde Elementary School have participated in events this spring to raise awareness about the global water crisis. The partnership began a few months ago through the school's STEAM teacher, STEAM is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, and that's Lucy McCann. Through the partnership, students read a book to gain a better understanding of the challenges communities around the world face when it comes to access. They participated in the Walk for Water recently and designed and built their own water filters. Five students from our district have earned National Merit Scholarship so far this year. Wondell High School's Claire Anderson and Akoncha Patwardan picked up corporate-sponsored scholarships and three more academic magnet high schools, Asher Wallen, Eli Bundy from Charleston County School of the Arts, and Ryan Teachman of Wondell High School received the $2,500 scholarship from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. And we look forward to more good news this month and or I should say next month and in July with more CCSD students receiving these prestigious scholarships. Daniel Jenkins Academy and the Murray Hill Community Association, along with support from additional civic organizations, partnered to host a community day called Cultivating Connections, and that was this past Saturday. The event's goal was to raise awareness of the school and build relationships with surrounding neighborhoods. The district's Division of Strategy Communications, along with five CCSD schools, combined to receive a state-best 21 awards in the 2022 Rewards for Excellence Program, which is sponsored by the South Carolina Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association. The honors include three best-in-show honors and district excellence in writing, school social media, and that went to Cooper River Center for Advanced Studies, and school website, which went to RV Stall High School. Rewards for Excellence recognizes outstanding communications and public relations efforts by South Carolina schools, school districts, and education agencies and associations. Emma Nodine, a student at East Cooper Center for Advanced Studies and a member of the Health Occupant Occupation Students of America Future Health Professionals, or HOSA, recently spearheaded a fundraising walk to raise awareness for a syndrome, which I'm not going to butcher the pronunciation, but it's called BBS. The event in April raised over $7,500. Nodine presented this project on her research on BBS during the capstone presentations in the CAS. Biomedical Innovation is the capstone course for Project Lead the Way biomedical sciences program for the high school students. Students there design innovative solutions for the health challenges of the 21st century. And finally, James Simmons Montessori School has offered its middle school students a journalism class this year. Students have interviewed representatives from the state law enforcement division, spoke and did stories with local judges, and wrote for the school's literary magazine. That's a nice snapshot of what's been happening around the district. Dr. Taylor, Board of Trustees, turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you so much.
That's.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Item nine A. It's the annual waiver renewal request.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver request for submission to the South Carolina Department of Education SCDE and State Board of Education STE.
Our motion has been made by Ms. Hederich and second by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions?
So on the waiver one, on the second page of kind of the graph set, it says that there's a what we're requesting is a waiver for the seat time in online, but it also says in person. Do we have a procedure for that? Is that something defined?
Yes, so the example that Ms. Roberts gave me is that an AP art teacher, for example, could have different art meetings in the same classroom at the same time. So it's related to their assignment that might be teaching several different levels in the same at the same time. So that's part of the reason why we asked for the waiver.
So how was that? Was it a seat time?
Teacher seat time in there. Ms. Roberts has given me the mantle of this, and I'm letting her down right now.
Okay. Why we have them?
There are times when students may need to sit at times who have to continue their work in high school. And so proficiency-based, whether it's workforce allows you to do all in question.
I think what just got me is it says it's labeled as online and the waiver is also for in-person.
I would anticipate that all our students taking courses through working with the students wouldn't allow them to do their work.
In-person.
You can do it in person. Sometimes you.
I mean, I support it. I just want, I mean, this this seems to have a sentence that opens the door for proficiency-based accomplishment. And I wanted to know if our students were aware of that. There's certainly a waiver that allows it.
It allows.
Perfect, perfect.
All right, any further questions? Ms. Green? No, okay, all right. Hearing none, please catch your vote. Kind of motion passes item nine B. It's for information on the Buse Academy as their presentation. All right.
Yes, sir, Reverend Mac, a very brief one.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Reverend Mac, orders, board members, Dr. Taylor, and to our viewing audience. We prepared a series of mission-critical updates featuring some of the most prominent initiatives that we entered that we had on the docket two years ago. But today I bring a very brief update on Buse Academy. So the initiative around Buse Academy was threefold in essence. We wanted to restructure the school in that we have phased out grades K one and two. Matter of fact, this will be final year of second grade at Buse. We also wanted to expand seats so that we can have more access and have a representative group of students across our entire county. And then finally, we wanted to revise that entrance criteria. So we did a few things. And in essence, we wanted to give you an update on our status moving forward. So as it stands, it's been about two years or so since we took on this particular board action. And since 2019, 20, minority representation has increased by over 20 percentage points. And so we we find that to be a positive, and we feel like we're making adequate progress towards the goal. For the upcoming school year, over 60% of the accepted seats are held by students who are zoned for 80% or higher poverty index schools. As of the upcoming school year, we will have expanded as promised to four classes at grade six, seven, and eight. And I think of particular note, all of the students who've applied, who've been accepted, are performing at the 75th percentile and will be reading at that. Our promise to uphold the standards, the academic achievement, the rigor that has always been present at Buse Academy. Next, you'll notice over time, that very first chart at the top, you'll notice over time that minority representation at Buse reflects an increase from about 17.5% to 26.7 schoolwide, which reflects an overall increase of about nine-plus percentage point. And so again, we feel like we're trending in the right direction. We also layered on a provision that speaks to having an annual review of the data of our standing so that we can ensure that we're meeting the intended goals of this particular board action. And then finally, this particular slide just speaks to the amount of accepted seats and how many of those seats are being held by students in our high poverty index schools. You'll notice where the bars are really low. That means there weren't any available seats or very few available seats. But in essence, for the upcoming school year, over 60% of those seats are held again by students zoned for our high poverty schools. So we feel like we're meeting the goals of this particular action. We will continue to support the program and monitor its progress moving forward. Thank you.
What's the capacity of these?
Right now, we've expanded all of the grades at three, four, and five. We're still in the process of expanding at grade six. And so the school capacity is less than 600. I have a finite number in my head, but it's less than 600. But we still were able, once we dropped off grades K one and two, expand at grades three and six. Those are our entry grades.
So three through five have four classes?
Yes.
And then we're working for 2425 to get the four classes added in middle school?
Right.
And do all the facilities have the capacity, the cafeteria, the playground?
We've been able to outfit. We've been able to outfit some classrooms at the primary grades and make them suitable so that we can accommodate. And so we feel like we're doing a solid job at outfitting in terms of equipment, materials, resources, extra personnel as well has been layered onto the school.
What kind of class sizes would we have by adding that that kind of fourth class?
Now, the class sizes are around 27, 28 per class. It's always been that.
Yep.
And so as we expanded, we kept to that same fashion.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't it be possible at some point to get maybe in the board Q and A, a list of the schools feeding into Buse from? I'm just looking at D four and seeing that percentage, just wondering what their zone schools are.
Absolutely.
So very similar to Ms. Waters. I know there can't be a requirement, but there certainly can be the knowledge. My concern is several of the D four students are not coming from their zone school. So I think part of the goal here is that the zone school can prepare you to succeed in our most accelerated programs. And I don't think that's the reality of students going in, and I'd like to see that so we can address it. But I know of six of the 25 that are not coming from their neighborhood school. They're zoned for it.
Right.
But y'all aren't telling us what schools are preparing students to access Buse.
Fair enough. We've had students come from pretty much all of our students at Buse, but to make this action work, we had to use the zoned approach. But fair enough, we'll get a list of actual schools they're coming from.
Right, just that's an information can't be a requirement.
Fair enough.
It's a bit, I'm sorry, Dr. French.
So it looks like most of the minority representation is coming in at sixth grade. And so is there anything that we could do more to to encourage students to apply for third grade from our minority populations?
You're right, Dr. French, and that's what I alluded to earlier with the bar graph. We had 30 seats available at sixth grade, and that's why you saw more students enter. It's not uncommon for there to be one or two available seats at grades three, four, five, six. So the number is so small in terms of what's available in terms of entry. But nevertheless, we did do a lot of outreach with our families when we kicked off this initiative, and it could warrant some more ground, you know, boots-on-the-ground work to get more of our families and students interested.
So to follow up then, because it's looks like you had 14 seats available in third grade this this coming year, right? And as I expect that's changed since you phased out second grade, so maybe it was just that those spots were taken because of the phase.
Right, and we still do have some priorities in terms of sibling and so forth. And so I think some of that is nuanced, but nevertheless, we do need to put more attention to outreach, advertisement, publicity in terms of making sure everybody knows the program is available to all students.
All right, thank you. All right, item 10 A. Nine C, I didn't refresh my agenda. All right, so item. Twelve A that came from the consent agenda became to be nine C. That opening, so. Let's move to item nine, see which is the D 10 middle school.
Yes, so just to by way of explanation, I was hoping that we could split this into two motions because I felt that the pace of program part of this this agenda item deserved its own consideration. And the CE Williams School at the North and South campuses are in. And so I was hoping that I would be amenable to the group that I submit to motions. One is I'm.
Any further discussion?
I'm just dividing the motion, which includes CE Williams North, CE Williams South, and Pace Academy.
So maybe it would help if we could hear the motion.
Right, right. So that's why I haven't made any further discussions.
Okay, I'm gonna make, I'm going to move to approve that the CE Williams Sixth Grade Academy program be maintained and replace the existing CE Williams North facility with a new 600-student, 900-student core MS building, middle school building, and to expand CE Williams South by eight classrooms.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Dr. French and second by Ms. Arby. What questions do we have?
I'd just like to hear the pace motion as well. Is that possible?
Well, we can do any.
It's it's in support. It's not so. Do you want, do you think I should wait? Okay, let's.
But Wayne, to be clear, she's asking us to separate the motion, and we can't agree to that until we know what the two different motions are.
That's why you should ask, why you separate it, so you can figure out what to separate.
That's why I thought that's what I did.
You have one motion on the floor that has, you said it has something to do with, you can have a motion, you want to make two motions.
Then you have to go with the pace motion first, and then deal with the original.
All right, that's why, that's why it's good to follow the lead when 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 governed accordingly, ask the question in the beginning. After the open expression of wanting to split two motions, are there any questions about the discussion of those before?
And my question was.
Hang on, let me finish, let me finish. No, I'm not, no, I'm allowing everyone to regroup themselves here so we can can think this process through. So when there's a motion on the floor, we can only move forward with the motion on the floor. However, she indicated in the beginning that there were going to be two motions. That's why I allowed the opportunity for discussion at that particular point in time so that once that first motion come on the floor, we'll be able to act accordingly because we won't be able to discuss the other motion at the same time. So that was the reason for asking that question.
And that was why I asked, can we hear both motions? I didn't second the motion to put it on the floor. That was my discussion.
Right.
Can we hear both versions?
All right, Dr. French, repeat your motion again. The motion that's on the floor is what we're currently going to discuss.
I made to approve that the CE Williams Sixth Grade Academy program be maintained to replace the existing CE Williams North facility with a new 600-student, 900-student core middle school building and to expand CE Williams South by eight classrooms.
So I have been advised by parliamentary procedure to ask my question now. What is your intention for the pace motion?
My intention for the pace motion is to maintain the spirit of the original motion and to that is allowing them to 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 find and design a co-located facility with a with a little bit of information about making sure they that we work on, work with staff to get the best configuration.
Did you have a follow-up question?
No, my answer is.
Ms. Green?
And so does splitting the motions make any difference on the outcome? My question was, would split, does splitting the motion have any, any difference in the outcome?
So I think that it allows us to discuss them separately if we have any more questions. But it also allows to consider Pace, Pace's proposal that they brought to us separately and to try to honor that they, they had a specific idea in mind in that. But we also want them to work with staff to make sure that the co-location is amenable to that.
Okay, Ms. Waters?
Jeff, they, they were here for the proposal, Ms. Barrow, sorry, they were here for the proposal. This is something that they want to move forward, correct? And, and working on this facility with C E Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any further questions? All right, there's a motion on the floor. Hearing no further discussion on the motion that's on the floor, we entertain your, your vote.
We voted initially, we didn't get the majority to approve this motion. What are we voting on now?
We're voting to split it, or we're voting on one motion? The originator of the conversation, she was asking us for the right to split it. When did we vote to approve this split?
That's what he did that night.
But you, it's an agenda item, we can.
Once this on the table, we can make from that.
So if we vote no on this, we are not going to have an opportunity to vote on the original motion.
So if this motion goes down, you can also come back with your original. So if this doesn't pass, it doesn't kill it, there's another motion.
All right, since we're having fifty million discussions, there's a motion on the floor that has been seconded. Dr. French made a motion that, that is opposite of what the original motion is outlined. To split her motion, she made a new motion, and it has been seconded. That is the motion that we're voting on right now. If you do not agree with the motion that she is putting on the floor, which is opposite of what is, is the recommended action?
It's not the opposite, I object. It is not the opposite of the recommended action.
Is it the exact motion that's printed here? I'm just asking yes or no.
Forever, Matt, it is not, but that doesn't make it the opposite.
Is it the exact motion that's printed here?
That's enough.
Okay, all right. Julie, has everyone cast their vote? Thank you.
I was coming back.
Where I changed my vote, because I was. Right, and it continues to reflect the original.
All right, did everyone cast a vote? Okay, that motion fails. We're going to take a five-minute recess. I'm going to ask everyone to please clear the room for a minute. Well, now we're zooming back into open session. Is there a motion? Mr. Eric, your motion?
I do. Make a motion to maintain the current sixth grade academy, replace the existing C E Williams North facility with a new six hundred student, nine hundred student core facility, allow Patterson's Academy for Comprehensive Education Pace to fund and design a co-located facility with C E Williams North and expand C E Williams South by eight classrooms.
Okay, removed by Ms. Hederick, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Dr. French?
Mr. Barrow, when you are working with Pace on developing the plan to fund their co-located facility, will you ensure that this does not compromise the capacity of the six hundred student, nine hundred core facility of C E Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Kind of motion passes. We're now go back up to item ten A. Who's presenting? Yes, ma'am. All right, are there any questions, item ten A?
Actually, I do. Is it coming from, is this the point for discussion?
Yes, ma'am, you have a question.
So looking through the the budget, and I'm going to say this because it holds too for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, until we align our salaries and quit worrying, and worrying is the wrong word, but until we align our salary structure so that we do prioritize the school-based positions, the district is going to continue to flounder. We're going to continue to be shifting kids from magnet school to charter school to magnet schools, choice schools. But when you have this thing that says because they make a lot of money, that percent gives them, and we're giving one person a twenty-four hundred dollar raise that has four layers of people before you get to a school-based leader who's only getting a nine hundred dollar raise in the budget presented to you today, to get to the teachers who have less than that. We've got to shift that. But when you're doing, and I don't, I don't know if it's a waiver, but when you look at the raises, divided by the number of people getting it, the sixteen thousand dollars for four K teachers is being divided by twenty people.
Point of order, is this relevant to the current motion, current agenda item?
That's, I am talking about the Head Start budget.
Ms. Bult has.
Yeah, I, I am. And if you look at the Head Start budget and you look at the raises that are being given out, I'm, all I'm asking the board to do is divide it by the number of people, and you'll see that as you get closer to the school, you get less of a raise. As you get further from the school-based positions, you get exponentially more money next year. And I don't know that that's a bad thing. I don't want to fault our people. But if you go through the budget, you will see that when you get to the school-based positions, you're getting to the lowest per person raise being, being provided in Head Start next year.
Okay, is there?
No, that, that's it.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Any other comments from anyone? All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm motion to approve the Head Start early, Head Start funding, total supplement, and quality improvement applications for the grass period, June one, twenty-two, through May thirteen, thirty-first.
Second.
All right, moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Kind of motion passes. Item ten B. Are there any questions? Now, this is the twenty-seventeen, twenty-two capital program. All right, moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Waters and Ms. Darby. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Dr. French?
So would this help to relieve the need to use a debt service for the morning side project?
Those funds would be reallocated. Whether or not it helps relieve the debt, I'm not sure, but we would not need the debt funding anymore.
Okay, and just for the design phase, not for the construction?
Yes, ma'am, just for design.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Kind of motion passes. Item ten C is approval of projects greater than two hundred and fifty thousand. Is is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the list as presented for purchases of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. My apologies. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We ask that you please cast your vote. Yeah, that motion passes. All right, at this moment, we'll have the first reading of the FY '23 budget.
Mr. Chair, thanks for Dr. Karen. Today, I'm presenting the first reading of the FY '23 budget. There are a few caveats that I'd like to cover in advance of the presentation. The budget we're presenting today has been modified from the budget presented at the May 9th committee of the whole meeting and differs from the budget book. During this, during this presentation, our views changes between the budget presented at the May 9th committee of the whole meeting with a 9.1 million increase and today's recommended budget with a 6.3 million increase. Acknowledging that key revenue assumptions are still unknown, we want the board to anticipate that the budget presented today will change between the first and second meeting. First slide, please. Changes since the May 9th committee of the whole include an overall status of the state budget. So currently, the session ended without an approved budget. There are two versions of the budget, House version and Senate version. Each version has a different allocation to the district. The conference committee will convene or other than the first week of June, and we're looking to have a finalized budget at the end of June.
It looks like we have the wrong package. So just everybody will have to read, look along with you.
Yeah, I was going to ask, do we have, do we have what matches what you're given? Because we have the budget book.
This is from the Cal, but this is.
It's in, it's in Boredocks, guys. If you can just follow that. Your link in Boredocks. It's an updated version. Ms. Williams, if you can just give us an opportunity for them to catch up on that. Does everyone have a copy?
So, ma'am.
Yes.
This is under administrative content. May 1st reading. And so this is no longer accurate.
May 23rd, you say.
I have my notes written on the documents they provided. I'll have to cross-reference the things.
All right. Do you have it, though?
I have it, just not where I can write my notes on it, but I've got it.
All right, got it. Okay, everyone sees the copy of it? Dr. French?
I have a copy online, yes.
Yes, okay, all right. All right, Ms. Williams, you can proceed.
Thank you. As far as, and I'm on site too, for instance, as far as the revenue changes between the two presentations, the one presented on May 9th of the committee of the whole today, the local revenue we'll discuss later have reduced by $13.6 million. That's in relation to the 2.8 million reduction in addition to a reduced growth rate on the tax assessments provided by the county authorities office. The next, there was an increase which will reflect a $3.3 million due to the Senate version for retiring fringe and new state aid to classrooms. Third, we have an increase based on the Senate version of the budget that reflects a higher allocation to the district for the added teacher salaries and fringe. Next slide, please. Additional changes moving into the expenditures. We moved the teacher step cap from 26 years to 28 years versus the 30 years that we reflected in the May 9th committee of the whole meeting. We did the same for the non-teacher step cap, moving it from 26 to 28 years versus the 30. We also modified strategies to balance with our new revenue assumptions taken into consideration. We allocated 3.1 million to special education, of special education staffing from fund balance. So we moved that actually in the budget and show you that in the second slide. We also allocate an additional 400,000 at the FY '22 fund balance to actually balance the budget. One highlight is that the FY '23 fund balance reduced from 130 million point nine, which we presented at the May 9th meeting, to 127.4 million in order to balance the budget with the new revenue assumptions. This still puts us over our anticipated year-end fund balance of 124 million, which is in alignment with our 16.67% of fund balances and our board policy. Next slide, please. Through many considerations, we decided to focus the FY '23 budget on the same educational priorities from the FY '21 budget. This means that we are continuing those same initiatives without adding additional expansion requests and supplements to it. So those areas include early childhood, additional capacity, abuse management, GT and middle school honors, expansion to access to, extension of access, excuse me, for social, emotional learning, and mental health, pay increases for all teachers, implementing the state mandated $2,000 salary increase in addition to a step increase, and again, moving the teacher's step cap from 26 years to 28 years. We also are providing pay increases for all staff. And a footnote here really is that our funding priorities related to the district's reasonable will be funded as agreed, so you won't see that reflected today in the general fund budget. Next slide, please. Additional focuses or additional caveats to the budget. We reduce the FY '22 current year spending salary of 30s through a hiring freeze and through a discretionary spend freeze in order to have additional funding to carry over to cover the FY '23 budget. We also increase our allocation of fund balance to cover the '23 budget, and that's because we have such a healthy fund balance right now. We can actively use that as a budget gap closure measure. And again, just a reminder that we are still in compliance with our board policy, 16.67% or greater of our fund balance. The increase in local revenue again is in alignment with the index tax flexibility as well as that 2.88%. Next slide, please. Diving into the numbers. Scenario three is what we presented at the May 9th meetings for the committee of the whole. That is also what's reflected in the budget book. Today, we're going to present a modification to that budget where we introduce a new scenario, scenario four, to the right. The highlighted numbers that I really want to focus on are the changes to revenue. So if you'll notice on the first row for the state portion of the revenue, using the Senate's version of the budget, which is more favorable to the district, the revenue decreased to 600 million, that million in addition to this reducing the mileage from 9.1 to 6.3. The net of all that activity resulted into a $6 million revenue decrease. Our projected expenditures stay the same, and this is a reminder for our required projected expenditures. We are, we are meeting the expenditure requirements. This does not include a ton of expansions or additional requests from the districts at all. When we look at our required increases, we break them out by ensuring that the teacher's step is allocated for the salary increase, retirement increase, our charter school obligation, our property fund insurance, and our operations contractual obligations and other must-dos. That includes things like our custodial contracts, transportation contracts, all which have natural escalators in the contractual language. The next line focusing on mission critical actions. You'll see a negative $1.4 million there. That reflects cost avoidance, meaning we anticipated that we needed more money for a particular mission critical item, and it actually came in less, so we were able to reduce the amount of allocation to mission critical and reallocate towards other funds to cover the budgetary gap. We also included learning services expansion. This is $3.1 million of special education positions. This ensures the district's compliance with our special education requirements. Next slide, please. Other considerations that we built into this new scenario for budget were human resource considerations, where again, we're moving the teacher's step cap from 26 to 28 in addition to the non-teacher step as well. We're maintaining our mark, 97% of market by adding a 2.3% cost of living adjustment to our salaries. We're increasing the minimum hourly wage to $17 an hour. And we're also removing the classified salary cap. That takes us down to a total of expenditure requests for 42 million dollars. We have $25 million to apply to that $45 million to balance. That leaves an outstanding $17.5 million that we had to close as a budgetary gap. Next slide, please. In our strategies to balance, again, for FY '22 due to the spin freeze and the hiring freeze, we're able to recover $7 million. It's the sum of the 4 million and the 3 million in vacancy savings and all the salary savings. The $3.1 million in special education positions we allocate, we're allocating out of fund balance. Additionally, we are taking for 7.4 million out of fund balance in order to close the gap of 17.5 million. Where this leaves us at the end is the 124 million that's highlighted in yellow. That was what the anticipated to be our projected fund balance at the end of the fiscal year '22. We're actually going to come in a lot higher than that due to our cost-saving measures at 145 million. Once you back out the anticipated costs and the things that we're applying to fund balance, it positions our fund balance at 127 million. Next slide, please. In order to reflect what the impact of the proposed increases look like for teacher positions, we provide the examples on the slide you see. I'm going to have Mr. Brigman walk through this slide, or walk through the example provider.
Thank you, Shawna. I hope everybody can hear me. So this is similar to the example we provided at last time, but it gives you an example of teacher positions. There on the left, you'll see a bachelor's step zero currently at 41,146 with the addition of a step as well as the $2,000 for a total annual salary of 44,074. So that's a zero-year teacher going to one year next year. You can see the same for masters and doctorate at the step zero, of course, moving to step one for 2023. The next grouping is similar, but a step 15 moving to a step 16. You'll see 55,191 for a current 15-year bachelor's teacher with the increases. That teacher would move to step 16 at 58,179. The difference here at the bottom is our group that currently shows a step 27 teacher moving to step 28. You'll see the bachelor's teacher at step 27 at 66,242. You'll see that increased total of 4,097 moving to 70,339. So the, our teachers are currently, our schedule is maxed at step 26. We originally proposed going to step 30. This is an increase step 28, so our teachers from step 27 to 30 will see an increase, not quite as much for the step 29 and the 30. Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you, Mr. Brigman. Next slide, please. At the request of the board, we reached out to the county otters office to get updated values on home assessments. Before I dive into this data, I'd like to caveat that the assessed home values we're looking at include all all areas of Charleston County. So you're going to see a really wealthy or expensive property is factored into these numbers as well. So for an owner occupied, with the 6.3 mileage increase that we're recommending today for owner occupied, for every assessed home value at 434,000, it's zero impact. Next slide, please. For non-owner occupied properties with an assessed value of 437,000, the impact would be another $238.50 per year. Next slide, please. For commercial rural property under the same scenario, the impact would be $914.71 per year. Next slide, please. And for automobiles, for every $20,000 assessed, it would be $10.92. Next slide, please. For personal property, for assessed value of every $10,000, it would be $9.56. Next slide, please. As I conclude, I want to remind the board that revenues are still unknown until the state finalizes its budget. Depending on the revenues that we receive, it's going to dictate what our cost-savings measure and budgetary gap closure options are and what that looks like. As of the sole, as of now, the numbers that we have now, what we know now, we're recommending a 6.3 million increase for this budget. But please be advised that the budget will change between this first reading and the second reading once those numbers are finalized.
Okay, are there any questions from any of the board members outside from my right?
Just one quick question. This may be from Mr. Brigman. So the hiring freeze is on everything but teachers, everything but classroom personnel? Or is it including classroom personnel? So how many vacancies do we have? For, and I'm sorry, specifically for classroom positions?
Ms. Waters, I don't have an accurate number at this point. Contracts were just returned. We're going through that process. I can certainly send something out in the board brief this week. I believe it was well over, it's close to 250, but I can certainly get, send a number out.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
It's just for this year, the end of this year.
Okay. Okay, so for July 1, you are going to fill this in. Okay. You saw my face. I was like, I don't even.
All right, Ms. Bult.
So, so that does mean one question. What are the 4 million new jobs you planned on hiring for that you froze?
4 million?
So the cost savings was $4 million due to a hiring freeze in the next year's budget, which means there was an anticipation of $4 million for the fires. What positions were those?
So $4 million represents two things. One, it represents the vacancies that we have in the district. So Mr. Brigman, you seem probably to follow this to those. Second, it reflects any variance in salary. So for instance, if we budgeted salary at $60,000 and we hired that physician at $50,000, that $10,000 would be a cost savings and going back into the fund balance.
Right, but we're not talking about what you hired people at. We're talking about people you're going to hire on July 1st. This was future 4 million. You're not going to
No, ma'am.
Fill those?
This is the current budget year, FY '22. That 4 million and that 3 million are, it's a cost.
Or money you say this year?
Yes, ma'am. So apply it to next year's budget.
Okay, and then my second question is, on your second slide, you said that local revenues dropped by nearly $14 million due to a mill reduction. A mill reduction on what? Real property?
So we, in our initial recommendation from May 9th at the committee of the whole, we proposed a 9-point mill increase and reducing that to a 6.3, it resulted in a 13.
So it's not the revenue, it's, it's anticipated revenues. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you're still, because I'm still looking at the fact that the revenues for fiscal '22 are 618 once we budgeted. And your scenario is to spend 614 just in GOF next year. Is that correct?
The anticipation, yes.
And that's just GOF?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I might put them.
Dr. French?
So I'm noticing that part of the way that you balance the budget is that you reduce the step. The increase in steps that we will be honoring from 30 to 28. And I'm wondering if there's a way to focus on funding those to 30 for all the school-based personnel, teachers or non-teachers, people who are working in our school. And would that be, would it be necessary not to give them that in order to, to? Um, and would that be, would it be necessary not to give them that in order to, to make this work out?
So it, it's, so, so two things. Uh, the first is because the state revenue is actually still unknown, we, we may or may not, that may or may not be an action we have to take. We just don't know what the final revenue numbers look like. Um, the second thing is it's to balance the budget, it's, it's either you reduce the expenses, increase the revenue, or you use your fund balance. So we did a combination of all three to create this balance. Um, in our, our state department. Uh, but it really, it's considered a thing that happens with the state revenue.
But, okay, I, I appreciate that. It's very nuanced and a lot of information, but I guess part of what I'm trying to get is can we focus on making sure that our increases were for our employees um, prioritize those employees who work in our schools over people who are working in central office, for instance?
We can look at all options once we have better defined revenue requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Green, you have a question? Okay.
Just one more question, just one question. When do we have to approve the budget by?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth? And we, we will not even have it from the state until the end of June?
Correct, possibly the first week, but we're anticipating um, that we have it approved by the end of June. If it does not, uh, if it's not approved or adopted by the end of January, it requires a continuing resolution, which uh, means that we get the same allocation that we had last year and carry over into next year when the state.
Thank you.
Or might have a motion.
All right, I think Ms. Coles has a question.
When are you going to provide the board the full budget? EIA special revenue, that total budget was about seven eighty four last year, and this book has only given us one revenue strike.
So the budget book uh, on page two details those additional special revenues, EIA special revenue in addition to the general fund allocation. Um, that will be modified as it reflects the final revenues once we have them before the second reading.
Page two of what?
Of the budget book.
So.
The one that was delivered to you this weekend?
Right, I'm, I'm looking for page two. And I think no, page two is verbiage, but not a budget. And page three still focuses on G O, G O F.
Page twelve please, I'm sorry, I'm a square page.
So page.
Twelve at the bottom, works as interfund transfers. That's where we itemize those allocations.
So then the total budget that you're proposing right now is six forty five, five two six?
No ma'am, the total budget that we're proposing is six hundred and thirty nine million.
Will we get a new book?
Yes ma'am.
Yes. Yeah, remember said in the beginning that, that book that you received is not, uh, it's not the ones, the numbers you're gonna receive today. Dr. French, you had a question?
So maybe I misunderstood Ms. Coles' question, but the debt service fund and the capital building fund are all in the budget book. So all of the different parts of our bigger budget are here, but we are only voting on the general operating fund, correct?
Uh, correct.
All right. All right, Ms. Oregon?
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
Um, I move to approve scenario number four of the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget with a six point three mil increase and ask staff once revenue is settled to review cost savings that wouldn't impact classrooms or use more fund balance to allow for teachers and non teachers to go to step thirty in the second reading of the budget.
Okay, is there a second to that?
All right. So can I explain what I?
Hang on one second. Uh, this, Bobby just made a motion in Ms. Green's second. It was, Bobby, we're gonna ask you to read that motion one more time.
Okay. So I'll read it one more time and then I'll just tell you what my thought process was. So move to approve scenario number four of the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget with a six point three mil increase and ask staff once revenue is settled to review cost savings that wouldn't negatively impact, I guess I should say negatively impact classrooms or use more fund balance to allow for teacher and non teachers to go to step thirty in the second reading of the budget. And my intent is that we approve first reading with the six point three mil increase and that in this timeframe between now and the second reading of the budget, staff can do some research and see what happens with revenue and see if there's any other cost savings. And if it's feasible, go to, have, take the teachers and non teachers to step thirty. They may come back to us and say, we can't make it work, but I'd like them to try.
All right.
I guess just how are we going to do that if we're not gonna get a budget from the state until the end of June? And this has gotta be approved on June thirtieth. Is this a special called meeting? Like, how are they gonna prepare without having any indication of what the revenues will be? So, do you mind if I answer that?
Yeah, let me just answer the latter part of that. So just anticipate there will be a special call meeting because of the, the length of the time that, that the legislature will go back into session, get an approval, get their numbers in and do a modification to the existing numbers. And so just anticipate that we will have a special call board.
And I, and I, I know this is not ideal. I know at least once we've had, the, the state hadn't approved the budget, so it went into continuing. Yeah, for resolution, thank you. And then we, we had to make our second reading of the budget in July. But I, I think there's, there are lots of moving pieces, so I think staff can work on that in the next few weeks and come back to us with, with some recommendations. And I, again, they may be able to do it, they may not be able to do it, they may be able to come back to us and say, if we do this, not using fund balance, but if we do this, whatever it might be, then we could do, go to the thirty. So that's, that's what I, I just want them to work on that, cause I think keeping our teachers, especially our really experienced teachers as, as much as we can, and I know there are districts in the state that are going to step thirty five and step thirty six. So I'd really like to see if.
I mean, I completely agree with you on that. I just didn't know, like, there's, it just seems like a bunch of hypotheticals.
What kind of, until we get.
So we adding more work to their plates until we know.
I talked to Ms. Williams about it before to make sure that they were comfortable before I made that motion, and I think they're that she can say for herself.
Right, we're anticipating um, different scenario proposals that I already did at the beginning of the conversation, cause it is worth an office system.
Thank you.
Any further?
Yes, I just, you know, working with audit and finance, I've been really working closely with Shawna and Bill. So, you know, I don't want you guys to walk away thinking that we don't think you have done a yeoman's job because I know what y'all have been working on. And, and so it's just, uh, you know, we've talked about some reorganization that won't, it help us with this year's budget, but I mean, so whatever you can do, um, you know, we would appreciate it. That job done, fantastic work.
And I, I'm welcome to your first year off maternity leave, and we ain't giving you a budget to work with. Have fun. But my, my concerns still stand, and I don't fault. So, so when I say this, I don't want anyone to say it's faulty, but we're overlooking the fact that five people in this district got two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars worth of raises in the last four months while we're struggling to balance these other things. We've got this system where but this isn't sustainable, that we're trying to create a budget that does what it should do, which is increase teacher pay, but insist on not closing that gap between teacher pay and executive level. And that's really, we're gonna hit a wall on this, and I'm not even sure we'd be having this conversation of raising taxes on the corner store, the barber shop, you know, the, the rental home by six hundred dollars in five years, if we had something that showed us we were moving in the right direction. But I struggle with this fact that we struggle so hard to raise taxes for these little bits of money in the schools and think nothing of a forty thousand dollar raise given out on a Tuesday. And that's why I, I struggle with, with, with the structure of what we've got to do to fix this district before we can move forward.
All right, duly noted. Um, any further comments or questions? All right, there's been a motion placed on the floor. Uh, it's been seconded. Julie, you have that motion? Quite lengthy.
Thank you.
Got it? All right. All right, the motion is before you. So we're waiting. Okay. Got it, motion passes. All right, item ten is uh, twenty three, twenty eight capital programs. Early out project was listed as information uh, for your review. Are there any questions in reference to uh, ten E? Ten F is the SO three initiative uh, that was listed in your packet. Uh, Mr. Hayes is uh, ready to do a presentation to us?
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. Uh, earlier this month, Mr. Kennedy briefed the audit finance committee as well as committee of the whole on the next round of investments that we're planning for SO three and the ones that are getting underway uh, either starting or about to start soon. Uh, so this uh, slide, or if you have anything, the presentation shows you the list of things that we presented to audit and finance committee of the whole, and I just wanna review those very briefly with you. So we divided this up under the major pillars that we developed our strategy for all children reading by grade level, by fifth grade by twenty twenty seven. And so this first pillar of activities that we're getting underway includes the rigorous grade level instruction. So we're spending money on starting to, to purchase our materials for our uh, ELA program to expand that. And we're also putting initiatives underway for our multilingual learning programs. And so those both uh, end up being about two point six million dollars over the next couple of years. Under our second pillar for high quality teachers and leaders, we have a program where we're supporting our acceleration schools with a bonus program as well as another district ride program for pathways teaching, which includes some certification programs as well as some support for new teachers and special ed teachers. We also have a district ride program for um, additional uh, money to go to a pipeline, a leadership pipeline program uh, where we'll be hiring some support physicians to, to run that program. And so under pillars one and pillars two, those are the initiatives that are getting underway. Uh, the last one really applies to all three of the positions or pillars where we are hiring uh, physicians for the school level proposals. As you recall, back in late winter and early spring, uh, the schools along with their uh, leaders and SICs develop proposals and plans for an allocation of the ASR funds. And so we're developing now our plans to execute the portion of that, which includes hiring FTEs. Now, of course, this doesn't include the entire um, uh, list of activities under the ASR program that were, that was submitted and briefed on, on April uh, at the Board of Trustees meeting, but these are the initiatives, the next wave, if you will, of initiatives that we're getting underway and the ones that we think in terms of timing are critical that we start our investments here. Depending on your questions, that's all I have for this presentation.
All right, uh, Ms. Green?
Probably not a question for Mr. Hamer, maybe for Mr. Taylor. And as you said, I I'm struggling with six point five million dollars in personnel. And, and I don't know that I'm asking you to have, but can we at least see where these positions might be going? What they're gonna be doing? I, I know we've talked over and over about sustainability. I, I, I get real concerned that we've got all this money and people will look at it as an opportunity to hire more staff. And do we really need it? I'm not saying we don't, but I'm just saying, can we get a listing? At least I would like to see, maybe the other board member, I'd like to see, you know, where these, all of these positions are going.
Yes, ma'am. Well, the bulk of this, uh, I think the six point five million that you referenced aren't really uh, that many positions. These are more uh, supports to acceleration, uh, the acceleration schools as well as um, uh, programs for certification, pathway to certification. So there are some positions in there, but the, the bulk of, of that six point five million dollars are, are for the bonus programs and the certification programs.
So you can split it out and.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We have a line item for, for each of those.
So you're, Ms. Ms. Green, you're asking uh, that a more detailed uh, line by line item? Uh, a report be listed as you can see where the dollars are really going?
Just for the personnel part, that's, that's my request.
That's, that's valid.
Because, um, and I would ask the board to start considering these, it's a hundred and thirty six FTEs in here. There's a hundred and thirty six new people that don't exist today. And if we just kind of do this without any discussion, we could be approving executive level positions that again self perpetuate. We're, we're assuming they're support positions. But I would ask the, the board to maybe request that the district bring to us just as they would if it were not S R funding. What kind of new executive level positions are being created here that will self perpetuate into the G O F in twenty twenty four?
Ms. Coles, thank you for your question. Ms. Belcher, would you like to extend on that a little bit?
Uh, for, most of these positions that we're adding are school based positions on the mental health side, on the tutoring, adding additional teaching assistants or reading coaches. I mean, part of the purpose of S R, a hundred and seventy million is to do COVID recovery. There are limited choices of how we can spend that money. We can spend that money through contracted services, so hiring outside agencies to come in, which we're doing. We can add to additional folks to do small group work in specifics, which we're doing. Or we can add instructional materials investments, which we're also doing. But I, I don't think we're actually out of uh, sync with other national organizations and how we're spending into, excuse me, other districts and how we're investing this money. I think one of our challenges has been, we're starting a little later as we try to go through the process with the community based organizations.
Right, and I respect that, but you've got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on two positions, one of which is a director and one of which is their support. I think we want to have a conversation about that. And that's your pillar two, hiring a director in support position, two years, two people, nine hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money out at an, at a director level position. I want us to explore further. And, and it's, it's the board's decision, of course.
So I think we're getting uh, I, I think it's the consensus of the board for us to get a more uh, detailed line report. Uh, Mr. Hamer, as to exactly where these dollars are, are actually being, uh, it was explained uh, by you and Ms. Belcher, but however, uh, just at the next reporting. So we have a, a, a final line as to exactly where the dollars are going. Just, okay, that sounds like a consensus come from the board. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry.
I'm still unclear, unclear on the timeline. So I know we took a step back from the community organizations, the schools put proposals forth that included some community organizations. And I'm just unclear as far as the distribution, the hiring timeline, how the original community organizations proposals are being looked at in comparison to what the school submitted. Is there any way that we can get a little bit of clarity on that process?
Yeah, I have a few some much for you. In terms of a specific timeline for each of their agreements that we have, I, I'm afraid I can't tell you exactly what it would be. Uh, it would vary. I think some are closer than others. Um, so we put a little bit of a priority on identifying uh, the scopes of work and the financial picture for the community based organizations that were identified in the school proposals. And I've had conversations with almost all of those community organizations, but I think, given them, but I think it's gonna be what's necessary to alter what they sent us in the fall to create a more usable vehicle for procurement. Um, so again, I think some of those are closer to having that scope of work and more details that, again, what they presented to us in the fall was just really just some information about what they could present now that we try to operationalize that, some several more steps involved with that. So we're, we're working that process, you know, ever since we briefed the board on April the twenty fifth of what those organizations were, we've been trying to develop the right vehicle to move forward. Uh, as I said, I can't give you a date on when those will be in place, but as a, as a But as, as the same with this process of what I'm briefing on today, there will be information provided to audit and finance and presented to the board before we move forward on any partnership.
Maybe just some clarity on how everything's kind of fitting together. Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Hay. All right, the monthly capital to project report is included in your packet. Is there any questions? You also have the monthly financial report that's included in your packet for information. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We move to policy 11A, Policy IG, which is the curriculum development, adoption and review first reading.
I'll, I'll move to approve first reading of the revised policy. Second.
All right, moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Hedrick. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Where is it, please? Catch your vote. Cut, motion passes. Item 11B is Policy FBA Capital Maintenance Plan, second reading.
Move to approve second reading of the revised policy.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green. Are there any questions? Hearing none, rest, please catch your vote. Cut, motion passes. All right, because send the agenda items was approved at the beginning of the meeting. Upcoming meeting, remind board members that June 8th is the special call meeting. That's just a reminder of interviewing the superintendent search firm. And then on June 13th will be the Committee at Whole. On June 27th will be the board meeting. Board members, if those of you that have not signed up for graduations that you were planning to attend, ask that you please do that this week as early as, as late as tomorrow, actually, so that they can better plan and notify schools of your attendance there. And so there'll probably be seating available for you. Hearing no further. I'm sorry, Dr. French?
We also have the board trading coming up on June 29th and 30th.
Okay, June 29th is the governance training that will be on the, is that our people to tell a little about that? Date time?
June 29th and 30th is the date, times from 9 to 2 tentatively. And we will be sending out location and menu options for lunch.
Okay, but would that be in the boardroom or you have determined?
We have not determined yet.
All right. All right, just watch your email notification in reference to that. Entertained moment for adjournment? All right, this meeting is now officially adjourned.
Yes.